Okay, this is the DuPage County Zoning Board of Appeals. We're here this evening to conduct our November 14 here meeting. I'll call the meeting to order indicating that all members are present with the exception of Mr. Jared. And there's no need for a roll call vote. I do have one. I don't have any items of public comment that are not related to this hearing, is that right? All right, I do have an item of public comment submitted in writing online that I'll refer to during the meeting. Next, we have no minutes to approve, so I'm ready to begin the zoning case for this evening. And that case is Biagio Biagio Land Corporation. This is filed as 24074. And it's a request for rezoning from B1 Local Business District to B2 General Business District. The matter was published in the Daily Herald on October 30, 2024. And I know I have a couple of comments about the need for additional information from one or two of the departments of the county, but no objections or comments filed by any of the authorities to whom we've circulated the petition. And I have a survey and a, well, I have a site plan. And then Brian, are these your exhibits?
Yeah, would you like me to run through the exhibits?
Yeah, can we start with a survey as petitioner is exhibit one and the site plan as petitioner is exhibit number two? And then tell us the date of each?
Yeah, that's how they're marked.
Wait, wait, we get you. Give the exhibits in a moment. We'll ask you and your witnesses to be sworn in.
If you raise your hands, please. Would you solemnly swear affirm the testament about to give at this clause and hour here, we're going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Okay, you can identify yourselves when you begin your remarks. But Mr. Armstrong, I will start with you. Start again with exhibits after you introduce yourself.
Thank you, good evening, everyone, nice to see you again. I'm Brian Armstrong on behalf of the petitioner. We have four exhibits that we're going to refer to. Exhibit one is a survey of the property updated by the surveyor on September 9 of 2024. Exhibit two is the site plan for proposed construction. Exhibit three is a land use and zoning exhibit regarding the surrounding property. And exhibit four is an aerial photo of the area, of the surrounding properties and various uses of the surrounding property.
Okay, could you let me interrupt you a moment? We have a member that's just appearing on Zoom and we're required to ask the member to indicate the reason that he's not here. And then we have to have a motion to permit him to appear by Zoom. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Jared, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, I'm away, work travel again for business.
Okay. There are motion to, motion, my Mr. Moran, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
A second of my Mr. Schultz, any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed motion?
I vote aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, one, one opposition, but I'll indicate that the majority seems to prefer that Mr. Jared be can be permitted to appear by Zoom. And now we'll go back to Mr. Armstrong.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this petition is for rezoning only from B1 to B2. We're not requesting any variations, we're not requesting any conditional uses, just a straight rezoning. The petitioner, the owner of the property is a concrete and asphalt paving contractor. And they use the property for their construction office and yard, which is a permitted use in the B2 district. The plan, there's, if you look at the survey, which is exhibit one, you'll see there's, there's a building on the property currently. Exhibit two, the site plan shows what they intend to apply for the county, assuming the rezoning is going to. They want to tear down the existing building and put up a new larger building. When they make those submissions to the building department, they will comply with all of the setbacks, they will comply with all of the stormwater regulations. They will comply with all of the applicable regulations that will be imposed on them to get approval to do that, which is why we're not asking for any variations and not asking for any conditional uses. They will comply with all of those regulations without any relief. So that's why we're only asking for the rezoning. As I said, they're a concrete contractor that uses it for their office and yard. They have about two to three people in the office each day during the day. And then they have a number of employees who come to the site, drive their cars to the site, pick up company vehicles, work trucks, work vehicles, box trucks, pickup trucks, et cetera, and take them out to the job site. So they have stored at the site approximately 12 box trucks. They have some Bobcats, some skid steers, that type of equipment that they typically use, some trailers. They have two cement trucks. And those vehicles, the work vehicles, if you look at both exhibit one and exhibit two, the survey and the site plan do depict a fence about a third of the way into the property. That's a six foot tall wooden fence that exists currently that provides screening from the front of the property. That is planned to stay. And then there is currently fencing around the perimeter of the property, chain link fence around the perimeter of the property. So that's, and they intend to continue to use the property for those same purposes.
Okay, let me interrupt again, just, Mr. Armstrong and I had a brief discussion before the hearing started to clarify that this is a straightforward request for rezoning. So if this rezoning request is granted, any use that is permitted within the B2 zoning category would be permitted. So the testimony concerning the current use or proposed future use is entirely irrelevant and is offered only in order to give background information, particularly to members of the public.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Joe Abel here, a land planner who you all are familiar with. Joe can talk a little bit about his experience, but as you've probably heard many times, he's been land planner for more than 50 years. He was the head of the DuPage County Zoning Department for many years. He helped draft, or actually drafted, the first county zoning ordinance. You've heard from him many times, there's no debate about his qualifications. He's going to explain to you in more detail than I about why the surrounding uses and the zoning of the surrounding properties support rezoning to B2. Just very briefly, I'll let him get into more detail, but there are a whole bunch of different types of zoning and a whole bunch of different types of uses, there isn't one that's predominant, including there are B2 zoning lots and B2 zoning uses two lots away, two lots down. So with that, I'll introduce Joe Abel and Joe, go ahead and provide your testimony, please.
As Brian mentioned, I looked at this property the same way the chairman has, is that is it from a planning standpoint, and Brian said, I was actually a director of the county development department, which included the long range planning for the county, plus the zoning work and all the development projects that took place during the 17 years I was with the county. In terms of this particular piece of property, I first was asked to look at it, struck me as sort of strange that this property was still left in a B1 zoning classification. And before I get into that particular part of it, the property represents about, about one and a quarter acres. It has 130 foot of frontage on Lake Street and has a depth of almost 400 and some feet. The, I took from the midpoint because the property is at an angle. The actual depth is 462 feet, 130 feet of frontage on Lake Street and in the back. And it's 120 when you go from property line to property line. As was mentioned, there's an existing prop, building on the property. It's been there, I think I was with the county from 70 to 87, and this property was there then. So it goes way, way back, and that's the reason it has a setback that's not what we expect from properties like this today. So it's almost on, the present building's almost on a property line. So that particular building, which is old and doesn't meet today's standards, will be removed anyway this property is redeveloped. But it's my understanding, working very closely with the developer, the owner, because they're the same, the business is going to stay exactly the same, which is that the building now will meet all the setback standards, which it has to do because we're not here for any variations. The front of the property, if any of you have been out there, the signage is all in, it's very close to the, to the highway. All of that's going to be setback, so the normal setbacks that are reacquired along Lake Street will be adhered to. The building that's, that will be on the property, about 3,700 square feet, meets all the parking standards. And then the storage of the vehicles in the back, behind the wooden fence. If it were laid out on the drawing, there would be approximately space for 24 trucks. They don't have that many, but that's the maximum that could go into this particular depth. Thinking about this as its present zoning B1. The B1 district, you just start with the definition of the B1, it's neighborhood. This is not a neighborhood area, this is, we'll get into the land use, we're talking about Lake Street. This is a very heavily traveled road and the types of uses there are intended to be heavier as opposed to what you would find in a local B1 neighborhood shopping area. It's understood that all of the landscape standards will be met. I think that's enough about the site itself. The surrounding land use and zoning just emphasizes what I was saying in terms of types of uses that you would expect to find along Lake Street. And again, everything on the north side of Lake Street is within the Village of Roselle. There's a small portion of the county that extends up into the area that has been not, has not been annexed to date. But other than that, everything is within the Village of Roselle. And then when you go to the east, the area is either within the Village of Bloomingdale, DuPage County, and you all have your exhibit in front of you. And then there was a strip annexation that Bloomingdale made to bring a multiple family zoning onto Lake Street, where as you can see, everything else for a couple of miles is either zone B5 in Roselle, B2 in the county, with the exception of the subject property and the lot on either side of the subject property. The lot directly to the west is an open space lot, it has drainage problems and probably will never be developed, it's been sitting there vacant forever. And so I don't anticipate any development on that. The parcel directly to the east is an office, constructed as an office building, but is present use for an adult use. And then you continue on and back to the Village of Bloomingdale with the multiple family, which is sort of out of character with everything along this entire Lake Street corridor, which is either zone M or B2 or B5. The, as I said, the use has been there, goes back to my time when I was with the county in 70 to 87. So it seems like this is an appropriate time to get rid of that spot zone and put it into the classification that it should. In terms of, just.
One second, Joe, did you tell us what's to the immediate south? I didn't, I missed that, if you didn't.
To the south is the yellow, just as behind all of the commercial on Lake Street. You go right back into R3 Residential in Roselle. The county is B4, R4, Roselle again, R2.
So it's county and the use is residential?
Subject property?
No, no, it's south of the subject.
Yeah, south of the subject property, all county R4.
Okay.
Then directly to the east by one lot, the one whole used lot, is all R3 special use as a townhouse development that Bloomingdale came up into this area. Again, can't explain it, but it's there. It seemed that the corridor is commercial everywhere except in that particular area. Another exhibit that we prepared. What we're showing here is that a lot of times you see the Roselle R5 zoning classification along the entire frontage. Yeah, I don't think there's any exception, except one little area that's B1 on the north side. But other than that, everything is R, B5. And you might say, well, B5 Roselle is heavier. What we're showing on this particular exhibit is that the B5 exhibit called subject property, every one of these uses that we've labeled are permitted uses in the Roselle B5. And they are also permitted uses in the county B2. So in effect, even though the exhibit is showing B2 on the south side, really, when you look, look at the two ordinances and the permitted use list, the two zoning classifications are identical. So the county B2 is the same as the Roselle B5. And so in terms of one of the standards, in terms of, you know, what is the predominant land use in this particular corridor, it's commercial and it's the type of commercial that we would find either in the Roselle B5 or the county B2, as I mentioned. B1, just looking at the zoning ordinance specifically states that B1 is meant for neighborhood type commercial, not for regional type corridors that you find on, on Lake Street. The, that's the, the main thing in this particular exhibit was to just show that both of these areas fall within the same zoning classification, even though they are different on the land use in the zoning exhibit. And in terms of the trend of development, again, you can see that pretty much this corridor has just developed over the years. The only use that is not a permitted use, as you'll see on your map, is a bowling alley, which primarily requires a conditional use. But other than that, every other use on this corridor is, is a permitted, permitted use in either district. The, that, that's the main thing in terms of meeting the standard of the existing land use and property in general area. The zoning classification that I said, it's the B2 is primarily for your heavier type uses along regional, I'll be out on Lake Street as opposed to neighborhood commercial. The suitability of the property and question for the use is permitted. The present use has been there, I would say probably 30, 40 years. It's existed there, it's pretty much a similar operation. And I think what's happening now is we have the opportunity, now have the same use, but having meet all of the standards that are in the B2 zoning district, concerns setbacks and things of that nature, Florida ratio, every, everything will be met, again, we're not asking for any variations whatsoever. And when you look at the other exhibit, you can see that the trend of development is all towards automotive or even uses. And that's, and, oh, I wanted to mention is that when you get to the uses that are not commercial, again, you can see on the aerial photograph, they are heavier uses than half truck components with. We have an office building on the, on the corner, you have Roselle Motors. Again, looking at the south side of Lake Street, all heavier uses, public storage, which again, is a permitted use in the district, even though it's not within the county. So in terms of the trend of development, territory, the area, what's being proposed fits in perfectly. When you look at the site itself, in terms of its long and narrow, there's no way that you could put a use other than one that's going to contemplate using the back part for some particular purpose. There'd be no reason to have just a retail use, either a restaurant or something of that nature, because of the long, the long quality of that, of the property. Most of the other uses across here all have a much shorter setback as opposed to the subject property. And so it pretty does lend itself perfectly to the use it's been using, been used for for the last 30, 40 years. Only difference now is that it will meet all the county standards. The other standard, the length of time the property has been vacant, hasn't been vacant, it's been totally used. It was used when I was with the county and it's still used today. And they're proposing to continue the use that they've been operating, but again, meeting all the standards. In terms of the property values, I'm not an appraiser, and I can only, so that is the extent of my presentation, thank you.
May I ask you a sort of a esoteric question? Usually when we talk about trend of development, we get a lot of testimony about what's gone on recently. But there's been nothing that's gone on recently. So trend of development here is not so much recent trend, but longstanding development.
Yeah, I would say when you look at trend of development, there are newer uses that have come in. The public storage is relatively new, you know, doesn't go back to the before, it was after 2000, let's say. With the, you know, when you consider the extent of things, but not only that, is there's turnover. Most of these uses, the windmill, wingstop, a couple of others, the preschool, stopped in, asked them how long they've been there. Those are all relatively new uses. We, we were able to pull up aerial photographs that showed the types of uses that were in this corridor. And then I went out to the field and I could see where there's been turnover. So it's primarily one retail use going to another.
Okay.
But the trend of development is definitely this heavily used corridor with just about every type of use you can think of, bowling alley, storage. You can see the heavy truck, so it's heavy truck operations all the way to just the beauty parlor, everything is in there. Okay, thank you.
One thing I want to follow up on, I mentioned all the different types of zoning here. It's probably easier to look at your, the surrounding land use, the zoning exhibit, it's exhibit number three. So the subject property is B1, immediately adjacent to it on either side is B1. But as, as Mr. Abel said, the property to the west, adjacent to the west is vacant because it's got drainage issues. Next to that, to the west, is B2, the zoning we're requesting. Next to that is also B2, so both the east and west sides of Leaking Road, the closest road to the subject property are B2. Next to that going, continuing to go west is Office Research. Next to that is Manufacturing, and then next to that west is a long stretch of B2. So to the, so there's a lot of different zonings, there is, you know, not uniformly, but there's specifically a lot of B2 zoning, which is the zoning we're requesting. To the east, of course, there's the Bloomingdale plane development for multifamily housing. And then again, B2 is an island of B2 zoning in the county to the east on Lake Street. So there, as I said, there's a lot of different zoning, but there is a lot of B2 zoning. So it is consistent with the zoning use of the surrounding area.
Okay.
I'll talk briefly about the suitability, I think it's, you know, the, the property is suitable, better, better suited for B2 zoning as we see from a couple of things, the use. It's been used for contractors' yard, contractors' office and yard for, as Joe said, at least 30 years. Not always owned by this petitioner, but by previous owners, same use, contractors' office and yard. If it was suitable for any other use, somebody else would have bought it and used it for some other purpose. But it's not suitable for any other use, that's why these petitioners bought it to continue to use it as contractors' office and yard. Lastly, I would, I think the same thing applies with respect to property values. Changing it from B1 to B2 is not going to adversely affect any nearby property values, given the uses and zoning that are the nearby properties. And, you know, it's, given that it's been used for those purposes for 30 years, that is the appropriate suitable use for the property. And it needs to be zoned accordingly, consistent with the other B2 zoning in the area and consistent with the use. That's what makes it suitable. So with that, very briefly, rezoning it to, to B2 is consistent with both the surrounding zoning of the surrounding properties and the use of the surrounding properties. It's consistent with the trend of development, to the extent there is a trend, given what the chairman's comments highlighted, that a lot of these uses and buildings have long been established there. It is suitable for B2 and it isn't really very well suited to B1. And there is no diminishment of value of surrounding property by changing it to B2. So with that, we request that you recommend changing the zone to B2.
And even though I suggested that the current use and anticipated use are immaterial in a straight rezoning issue, it does sort of tie in to your request for variation because the current use and situation of the buildings and signs, et cetera, all are grandfather preexisting uses, which are otherwise out of sync with various setbacks. Once you rezone, you, all those grandfather issues disappear. And so the advantage, I know you're shaking your head, Joe, because I'm only restating what you testified to. So we agree, that all goes away and the advantage then. That all goes away, and the advantage then to the surrounding area of the county is that we are in compliance with setbacks and, you know, various other zoning restrictions.
Right, we take a property that because of its age and grandfather status is not currently, not compliant with the current requirements, and we're going to upgrade it to comply with the current requirements.
Okay, we may hear more about use based on the comment that I have from a neighbor, which I'll read into the record when we get to the public comment section. Are there any questions about the rezoning standards or particular questions of either of the witnesses here by other members of the board? No? Okay, then I'll take a public comment on this case. Let me first recognize that I have a written comment, which will make part of this record in the form of an email to our staff representative by Ms. Nicole Toth. I'm not sure I'm pronouncing the name, so I have that written comment. And then are there any other members of the public that would like to make a statement about this case? Okay, anybody that wants to speak, please raise your hand, and I'll have you all sworn in at the same time. Two, three, four people? Okay, excellent. Would you stand, raise your right hand, and all be sworn in?
You just only swear affirm the testimony about to give at this cause, our hearing will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Great, when you begin, tell us your name, spell your last name, for reporter's convenience, and tell us your address and where you are in relationship to this property. Then tell us whether you support, oppose, or just have a general public a general remark about the case. And each of you will be given up to three minutes. So who'd like to go first? Go right ahead.
My name is Autumn Sicurella, S I C U R E L L A. My address is six N three one zero Wheaton Road in Roselle. I oppose the rezoning. And I have the following statements. We, as a neighborhood, have already experienced issues with this property with the current zoning of B one. And if nothing is going to be changing with the operations, I don't see the benefit of changing to B two, which would just further allow additional noise. The gentleman mentioned that this is not a neighborhood, but I know that it is because I live there. And in fact, it's a quiet neighborhood where people have lived for decades. We have present children of people who grew up in this neighborhood that purchased property within the neighborhood because it's a nice little rural haven. There's still horses and chickens in our property, in our neighborhood, and we don't want to live in a noisy urban environment. That's why we've selected Keeneyville to live there. We like having large yards because we enjoy being outside and enjoying our property. And the quiet enjoyment of our properties is being disrupted by the activity that's already happening at this property. So I canvassed the neighborhood with my husband and the neighbors that we found home. Only two did not sign the petition that I have present here. One, because he was a renter and felt that his voice wouldn't matter, and the other, who said he'd already taken measures of his own. So as far as I'm concerned, that's in one hundred percent opposition of all people who live in the block around this subject property that oppose this zoning petition. The current zoning, when I read that, the intent of it does seem to be retail, commercial, retail that butts up to residential. When you read the types of things that would be included, things like antique shops and bookstores, those are, those are things, businesses, that would be keeping normal retail hours. Not four thirty in the morning, not ten thirty at night, not heavy equipment, not banging on metal, idling, concrete trucks, skid steers, parties even. Those, those types of businesses would not be having that type of activity. We also have concerns about them polluting the aquifers because we're all on well water. They're washing out concrete trucks, other landscaping chemicals. That, again, I feel that that intrudes on my right to enjoy my property in the way that I intended when I purchased my home.
Okay, thank you.
And can I submit this to you as?
Yeah, let me see, we have some requirements as to forms of petitions. Thanks.
We didn't really have a lot of time to put it together, so we did the best we could.
Okay. I need, who circulated the petition?
I did, my name is the first one on the list.
And you witnessed this, although many of these are just printed names, not signatures.
Well, it's kind of some people's signatures.
Oh, okay, well, I'm not a signature expert.
Everyone who signed that had the intent of agreeing to it with their signature.
We need a legend on here that says, I am the person that circulated this petition. And all of those who signed the petition signed in my presence. You sign that, and then your signature has to be noted. Yeah, so write that in, and then you have to, and sign it, and then have your signature, oh, you need a pen?
Yeah.
So who's our next speaker? Go right ahead.
I'm Nicole Toth, I'm at six N two five seven Wheaton Road.
Just to speak up just a little if you can.
I'm at six N two five seven Wheaton Road in Keeneyville. We are the property south of, of the of the company Fortis. We share a property line that's pretty long with them, like there's a fence in between us and them. I guess we have a lot of the same concerns that were already pointed out. I wrote an email because I feel like I communicated water illegally maybe then verbally, but in general, we have the same concerns, along with the fact that there is, there are significant piles of debris back there and of questionable quality. We don't know what's in them, and that just adds to the stormwater runoff, potential pollution of the for concerns. So, I mean, really, it seems like this business is already operating in a way that's not acceptable to us. So if they were to get this zoning, that would just allow more freedom to continue. I also heard, like, in the testimony, you know, they want to continue with status quo, and that's not something that we're, that we're comfortable with. And I think it does affect our property value in the sense that we're not able to enjoy it when we're out there, you know, it's always noisy, and we're concerned about our water quality.
Okay, thank you. And your name is T O T H?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's perfect. You know what, I'm gonna, we have a notary here.
I'm one, but I don't have my stamp, but I can
Just make a squibble. Okay, then we had, what, one more, two more people? Sir?
Hi, I'm Roger Kirch. I live at, I own the two six, six N two six nine Wheaton, which that's right up to the back of it. Couple of questions. The Van Gundy people that owned the property previously, I have a question, they were notified that they needed to do some changes to that particular property. And I have questions about what that was all about, because there was, the county was asking them to do certain things.
When was that?
Oh, gosh, how long Van Gundy's been gone, eight, ten years maybe?
Well, this isn't the place to address that.
Well, I'm just, what I'm referring, the reason why I'm bringing that up is because if there was a needed change at that time, we still need to change now. Okay? If there was, this issue was back eight, ten years ago, you would think the issue would still be here because there is no change to the property usage, is what I've been hearing. Therefore, I'm presenting that as a question mark. And then also the fence line that's in the back that's posed, do you know how tall that fence line is? They don't give us a height on that fence line.
I have no idea.
Okay. I have concerns about that because of our site, we're directly connected to it. And again, I want to reiterate what was said here previously. The garbage that's sitting back there, and the trucks, and the way they're rinsing their trucks off, it's seeping into our soil because we're down lower, and it drains right in through to our property. And we're all on well systems. So we have a great concern about that. Just the also, the B one, B two and all that stuff. I heard a lot of talk about the corridor, but I think you guys need to consider the neighborhood that's back there. We're the people who live there every day, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. That's my comments.
Okay, and then the final person?
Similar statement. My name is Lucas Sicurella, I live at six N three ten Wheaton Road, just across. And I have a clear shot of them right through my neighbor's yard, so I'm very familiar with the property. We understand having a commercial landscaping business in the neighborhood, we really truly do. But there's a difference between a place where people could go to buy mulch and plants and things for landscaping versus a company who is specifically there to do concrete and asphalt, large industrial work. That's not normal B two business. We understand having an office where they could have a place to do like design layouts, handle permits, handle billing issues. That makes perfect sense to have a business that would operate like that. Not a place where they're storing heavy equipment, maintaining that heavy equipment. It makes loud noises every time it started up. It makes loud noises every time it's put into reverse, there's backup sirens. The tailgates on the dump trucks, every time they drop, we hear them smack through the yards, it echoes through the whole neighborhood. Excuse me. So we're concerned not only about the potential for pollution through contaminants, because they've had grain in their backyard washed through when it rains because of them cleaning out the concrete trucks, but also the noise pollution that it's causing in the neighborhood. So with anything, we oppose this, and we would hope that they would be made to remove the industrial equipment that they already have on a business property. That's not a commercial, concrete trucks and dump trucks is not normal business operating, that is industrial use. And I understand that he said that that property has been operating that way for thirty or forty years, but I've lived on that street for nearly thirty years. I bought a house on that street because I liked it so much. And this is not the way it operated for thirty or forty years. And the last three or four years, excuse me, since Fortis has been there, this noise level and this contamination and everything else has exponentially increased. So this is not the way that it has been for years. And as far as it not affecting property value, I personally, wholeheartedly disagree with what this gentleman said. I would not have bought my own house for what I paid for it, dealing with noises that we hear coming from that. So if I would have not bought my house, I doubt anyone else would either. Thank you.
Thank you very much. What are the hours of operation?
They typically start early in the morning, like all contractors do, six thirty or so. And they typically are done in the afternoon, late afternoon. They do have, I think on some weekends, they have people there cleaning trucks, cleaning equipment, doing that sort of thing, but they're not operating, you know, they're not, they're not operating on a weekend. They're doing kind of maintenance of their equipment, cleaning their equipment and stuff. But, but Monday through Friday, it's six-ish, six thirty-ish to four, four thirty.
And you talked a lot about the use having existed there for some many years. What about this particular operator? How long has this company operated at the site?
Four years.
Four?
Four.
Okay, I didn't know you said four. All right, well, I'm gonna save the rest of my remarks for the recommendation meeting.
Mr. Chairman, okay if I just briefly respond to some of those?
I'll go to you in just a moment. Any other remarks from board members?
We have some pictures of spoil piles. Is that frequent with the contractor business that you're gonna have spoil piles in the back there?
Well, what, what happens with those is, when they work on a job site, sometimes they have spoil piles. They, when they, when they finish the job, after the time that the dump or the ultimate destination for those spoils closes, which closes early, that earlier than they typically finish their work, they bring them back, they haul them off, they have, two to three times a month, they have that hauled off. So it is coming in and it's being hauled off. You know, two to three times a month, right? Yeah, so two to three times a month it's hauled off. So it's temporarily there. And the reason is, there's nowhere else to put it because, you know, five o'clock, if they finish a job, the dumps are closed, you can't take it to a dump at that time of day. So they have nowhere to put it.
Go ahead.
Any other questions?
I have one, just out of curiosity, you said six thirty-ish? And your client kind of shook his head, and is it six thirty-ish? Testimony been four thirty.
Six, six thirty.
Okay, well, we may impose time limits as we consider that question. Okay. Any other wrap-up information?
I just, you know, there was a comment about the property is industrial. You know, the county has a specific definition of industrial use and industrial zoning. And not that this is within, clearly within B two, this is the definition of B two. And then just the bigger picture, there was
Which category within B two, precisely?
This work, what, the current operation is B two, yes. Contractor office and yard.
Which line item permitted use under B two?
The contractor. Contractors or construction offices and shops, including but not limited to concrete, electrical, printing, plumbing, need not be enclosed.
Contractor yard, did you say?
Yeah, well, I say contractor yard, because the item in the zoning code specifically says it need not be enclosed. Doesn't have to be in a building. And obviously, it specifically mentions concrete contractors. And then, just, just a kind of bigger picture here, thing here. The comments, there were a lot of comments about noise and water quality and seepage things. Those aren't really zoning standards or rezoning standards. Those are regulatory issues that, whether it's the stormwater department, or building department, or the Illinois EPA, if they require permits to do what they do, and they don't have them, those bodies enforce those regulations. If they're violating rules and regulations of the county or the state, those bodies enforce those regulations. This body just determines the zoning, doesn't determine regulatory affairs or enforcement of those types of items. That's why we have the EPA, that's why we have the storm. That's what I, I'll hear.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you. But when I said I'll reserve the rest of my comments for the recommendation meeting, that was the heart of my comment. That our hands are tied to the zoning questions, the proposed land use plan, and that offenses of noise, et cetera, need to be addressed. I think it appears to be compelling, but it's out of our hands, and the neighbors might confer with the staff as to what the appropriate avenue is to resolve your issues. So with that, I guess we're ready to adjourn for this evening. And once again, December five is our recommendation meeting, there will be no testimony taken at that time. It's simply a deliberation about this case and other cases from the board, you're welcome to attend. You can also appear on Zoom because it will be broadcast as this meeting is. Okay, so we'll adjourn for this evening, thank you very much.